Let's call this meeting to order, gavel, gavel, gavel. This is the regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for the 2nd of December 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
I'm here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sims?
Sent and accounted for.
Bowlin?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith? I didn't hear anything. Smith?
Yeah, your audio is not on, Ron. Just hold up semaphore flags, you know. You need to get your audio. Yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and notice that Mr. Smith is here. And then Ms. Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a quorum and everyone is present. This is a summation of our agenda for this evening. We will be hearing approval of minutes, followed by reports. Maximum of 20 minutes for each part of the report section. We'll hear first reports from council members, then from the mayor and city offices, then from council committees, and then from the public. That'll be followed by appointments to boards and commissions, and then the following legislation for second reading. Appropriation ordinance 2007 to specially appropriate from the general fund, enhanced access fund, solid waste fund, risk management fund, and the rental inspection program, fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated, appropriating various transfers of funds within the public safety, telecommunications fund, alternative transportation fund, parking meter fund, cumulative capital development fund, fleet maintenance fund, police pension fund, and appropriating additional funds from the general fund, rental inspection fund, solid waste fund, and the risk management fund. Legislation for first reading will follow. That will include ordinance 2028 to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning 7.22 acres of property from planned unit development, PUD, to mixed-use student housing, MS301 East Brownstone Drive, the standard at Bloomington LLC petitioner. Ordinance 2030 to establish the citizens' redistricting advisory commission, to establish an independent redistricting commission, and ordinance 2032, and an ordinance to amend ordinance 2022, which fixed the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2021. That will be followed by additional public comment, maximum 25 minutes. We will take up matters of council schedule, and then we shall adjourn. Let's start with approval of minutes. Madam Problematarian?
Yes. Sorry, I need to get to the right page here. I move approval of the following minutes from 2010, July 7th, September 15th, September 22nd, October 6th, October 20th, November 3rd, and December 1st.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve these minutes? Last call. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to approve minutes? Did you not hear the roll? Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to approve minutes?
Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
He's still not, his audio is not working, but he indicates yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Those minutes are approved. We now go to reports from council members. Remember who has a report? Now is the time. I'll start with Councilmember Rosenbarger.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
No report, thanks.
Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to extend an invitation to the public to my December constituent meeting coming up this Saturday, December 5th at 1:30 PM via Zoom. There is a join button from my website at sueforcitycouncil.com, and please feel welcome to join us. Many of the issues are going to focus on District 2, but some will be broader than that. And Eric Gruelick will be our guest from Planning and Transportation, in particular to discuss the mapping process coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
No report, thanks.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes. First of all, I wanted to invite people to my monthly constituent meeting. It just happens to be that in December, it's the same day as Councilmember Scambaluri, but not at the same time, so you could do both. It will be from 11 to 12:30 on Saturday, December 5th. And you can find the link on my Facebook page, Piedmont Smith for City Council. And it is via Zoom, just like all meetings are these days. I also wanted to put in a plug for the Citizens Climate Lobby Call-In Day, which is tomorrow, December 3rd. The Citizens Climate Lobby is a bipartisan group that is lobbying for national legislation in the United States to enact a carbon tax and dividend system in which carbon emissions are taxed at the source, and that money is then redistributed to individuals and families to offset what will undoubtedly be higher prices that they would be paying for the end products of the petroleum cycle or the fossil fuel cycle. This is known as HR 763. In the current Congress, we expect it will be brought forward again in the next Congress. And I encourage you all to check it out. You can just Google Citizens Climate Lobby. The specific link for the call-in day, where you can just put in your address, and they will hook you up with your Congress congressional representatives is cclusa.org/call. And they do very good work. I encourage you to check it out and communicate with your federal representatives to take significant action on climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
No report, thank you.
And I have no report, so that concludes council reports. We now go to reports from the mayor and city offices. I see Mayor Hamilton on the call. Good to see you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, and let us know what's going on.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me all right? Nice to see you all. I thought I might start just with a quote. It's in the last 29 days, given all that we've gone through. I thought it might be helpful. I've shared this before, but President Lincoln, near the end of the awful, brutal Civil War, was speaking to General Grant, and he said of our country, quote, "There was always just enough virtue in this republic to save it. Sometimes none to spare, but still enough to meet the emergency," close quote. So I just want to thank that we've had enough virtue in this republic to save it, and I won't say anything more than that. It's been quite a 29 days. So I want to give you a quick report tonight, and happy to take questions too, on COVID and what's happening with the pandemic in particular. I know you have important agenda items that I care about too, but I won't speak about those. But it's been a couple months since I've come to you and reported on COVID. We've done the budget and other things since then, and I wanted to give you an update. Short and sweet, we are in a very serious position. I want to mention that I do believe, I'm very confident, that the local actions that we have taken together, from city to county, county health, IU Health, Indiana University, that very strong collaboration has been very important and very helpful in the last nine months. The things like the mask order, limits on bars and restaurants, gathering sizes, that collaboration has been critical to help protect us. This county has been among the best in terms of the experience of COVID in the state. But the fall and the winter surge, which many worried about, has indeed hit us. It is very real. We know from experience in our expert advisors in public health world that it is basically social gatherings and community spread that are driving the numbers up. Just for you in particular to know, we just reported today our 35th city employee with a positive COVID diagnosis. That's about 4% or so of total employees who have been diagnosed. All have recovered today, thankfully. That includes significant numbers at the utility department, police and dispatch, parks, fire department, as well as Bloomington Transit are kind of among the most significant numbers. But I am also pleased to let you know that, you know, again, I think the collaboration and work together has been incredibly important, has helped Monroe County. While there were some really significant risk factors for us with a major university, people coming from all over the country, we have had better numbers than the state as a whole in terms of incidents, actually pretty similar to the national numbers if you look at our county numbers, as well as our workforce. However, as many of you know, I'm sure hospitalizations in our state are now reported at second highest per capita in the country, among the 50 states. We have serious surge happening. We have local hospitalizations rising as well. We have local deaths rising. We've had about 10 deaths in the last two weeks, which has hit a significant surge as serious illness is spreading in our community. We have major challenges ahead. It is critically important to continue, both to model the good behavior and to continue to encourage the good behavior of mask-wearing, physical distancing, good hygiene, stand away when we're sick or feeling any symptoms, but also recognizing that half of the, half of the disease spread happens from people who are asymptomatic. We learn most of it's happening, it appears, in settings where we don't even have large numbers, but it's, we let our guard down and get outside our immediate household. So I'll also just remind you, I know you know this as well, but we've been very active as a city, and just to remind you of that, with the Economic Stabilization and Recovery Task Force, which has worked since March, put more than $2 million out to support dozens and dozens of establishments. We're continuing to work on that. The Social Services Task Force, which put out multimillion dollars and coordinated a lot of grant giving to support the basic safety net that's been so important. Of course, you know Jack Hopkins' extra support that together we've produced this year. You'll hear very shortly from Mary Catherine Carmichael give you an update on the testing site, which we have supported. We've also put money in, as you know, with the county in strong collaboration to support an emergency winter women's shelter. And finally, I'll just report the isolation center, which we submitted and got approval from the state to operate. That isolation center, which has been serving people who don't have anywhere else to isolate people without a home or people without a safe home to isolate it in. We've served 144 individuals locally, including 18 children. That's been an important part of our safety net that we've added. I just got numbers that last week, 12 people there self-discharged, and 28 people went from that shelter to the hospital for treatment. So just a reminder how serious things are here. We will continue to cooperate very closely. I give the weekly, join for weekly public announcements on Friday afternoon. I'll do that this Friday at 1:15 to update the public on all that we're doing together. But I just wanted you to know that it's going to take resolve. It's going to take serious effort. Things probably are going to get worse before they get better over the next few months. Our Recover Forward investments are incredibly important. I appreciate your work on that. And I will just close with maybe what can be viewed as a positive note, too. First, it is wonderful that our, our local company Catalent, which has now grown to nearly 1,800 employees, as I'm told from a start of about 700 or 800, just a short couple years ago. Catalent will be packaging and helping deliver vaccines for the COVID disease, the pandemic. It's, it's, we should be proud to have our peers, our colleagues, our neighbors all helping with that as part of the distribution system to help tamp down and finally solve the pandemic. So watch their work in 24/7. They're expanding like as much, as fast as they can. So that's exciting and good news. And, and I'll, last point I'll make before handing it over to Mary Catherine is, we will be reporting this Friday, but I confirm that Indiana University Health is, is, is able to announce that, assuming that the vaccines are approved, as we expect by the FDA and the national processes, which should happen in a matter of days, we actually could see vaccinations beginning in Bloomington from IU Health as early as Tuesday, December 15th, in less than two weeks. There is, as you would know, very strong and serious protocols from the Public Health Experts, National, State, Local to assign those first vaccinations to go to first frontline healthcare workers who have given so much, and also long-term care residents. There is this very thoughtful protocol to move forward from there into first responders and other direct caregivers and others in the months beyond that beginning will roll out eventually through to those who are in critical industries and teachers and pharmacists and many others, eventually to the general public in the months ahead. But I thought it was important to note that while we will have very difficult weeks and months ahead, the vaccination should begin in our community, actually, within two weeks, we expect. There's a couple steps that have to take place, and happy to talk more about that. But I really appreciate your support through all this, and wanted you to know that update of the good collaboration that's going on. Excellent work together. We are not immune, they're not an island, so the surge has definitely hit us and is taking some of our neighbors. It's a very serious disease, but I want to, I wanted to give you that update, and I'd be happy to take questions. You may want to hear from Mary Catherine Carmichael first, who can give you an update on the local second testing site, which has just opened as well, and then maybe we both can take questions.
That's wonderful news, Mr. Mayor. Let's have Mary Catherine Carmichael speak first, and then we'll, we'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. May I share my screen?
Please.
Oh, maybe not.
There, there it is.
Let me get into present mode here. How's that?
Very good.
All right. Thank you for your patience. I appreciate it. Good evening. I'm Mary Catherine Carmichael, Director of Public Engagement in the Office of the Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening on the topic of the most recently opened COVID-19 testing site in Bloomington. Here we go. There's a picture of it, in case you haven't seen it. Whoops, got, jumped ahead once, sorry. There we go. There it is. That building may look familiar to you. Late this summer, the state of Indiana began encouraging local county health departments to stand up their own COVID-19 testing facilities. The state was interested in phasing out the Optum sites, and you may know our Optum site is at the Armory on South Walnut Street, and turning the responsibility of COVID-19 testing over to local governments. However, as time passed and the virus continued to gain momentum into the fall, it became obvious that the demand for testing would overwhelm supply without the Optum sites remaining open, in addition to those now available, thanks to local health departments, and, in our case here in Monroe County, their partners. Due to the enormity of the task, our county officials reached out to several local entities to request assistance standing up our new testing site. As you know, unfortunately, the federal government has not stepped up to organize COVID-19 testing nationally, so states and local governments have had to respond to the overwhelming demand for testing. And while our state is offering partial financial assistance to set up local testing sites, it is not adequate to get the job done, leaving communities to fill in the funding gaps. Those who partnered with the Monroe County Health Department to get our new facility at 640 South Morton Street, opened on November 16th of this year, included the city of Bloomington, Indiana University Health, Indiana University, and Monroe County Government. Indiana University and the city of Bloomington each pledged $100,000. IU Health invested a comparable amount, both in cash and in kind donations. The site is further supported by a grant from the Indiana Department of Health to provide seed funding, as well as ongoing supplies and equipment. Monroe County Government has committed the $200,000 they received from the state specifically for this purpose. The city of Bloomington's contribution of $100,000 will come out of our CARES Act money allocation. And I want to give you just a quick aside here. It's, it's good to remember that the city CARES Act money will need to cover as much of our COVID-19-related expenses as possible, so that funding is particularly precious. While the city, Indiana University, and IU Health were not obligated to support this effort, each organization stepped forward in the best interest of our community and made funding available to get the testing site open and serving clients as quickly as possible. See if we can go forward here. I'm working two computers here, folks, so thanks for bearing with me. There we go. According to information, oh, it's a little, yeah, it's a little over. So I saw me here, sorry. According to information from the Monroe County Health Department, the site on Morton Street can serve as many as 200 clients a day, although currently, they're still serving fewer than 100 a day as they ramp up their capacity. So far, the facility has completed over 700 tests with an average result time of four days, but it can take as long as seven days. The State Department of Health is aware of the barriers to getting results quickly, and they're working with the county to resolve those issues, as well as with the test providers. Appointments are required and can be made at scheduling.coronavirus.in.gov. However, the site hopes to be able to accommodate walk-ins in the future. The slide you're looking at is from the Monroe County Health Department website, and it has all the links that you need in order to schedule a test. Again, appointments are required and can be made at that link, scheduling.coronavirus.in.gov. However, the site hopes to be able to accommodate, accommodate walk-ins in the near future. This follows the same trajectory as the Optum site when it first opened, and gradually it ramped up to its current testing levels. Testing is free of charge, and anyone can get a test. County residency is not a requirement, but you will be asked for your zip code when you register for an appointment, and you'll be directed then to the nearest testing facility, although I'm aware that some folks have gone to testing facilities in other areas. At this time, the plan is for the site to remain active until the end of June 2021. It is hoped that at some point in the near future, the facility can transition to offering COVID-19 vaccines, although there are no firm plans or dates related to that at this time. As with everything during this pandemic, the needs of our residents will dictate our future plans. And with that, I'm happy to take questions. And I think Mayor Hamilton is still here too, so.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Carmichael and Mayor Hamilton. Are there questions on COVID relief from council members? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. First one is for Ms. Mary Catherine Carmichael. I noticed at the bottom of the slide, I think it was the Bedford location and Monroe Hospital. They will take people on physician's orders. Are we take, are we doing the same at our new facility?
We do not require a physician order, no.
Okay, but if you get a physician's order, you'll still have to go through the same scheduling process online?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And can I ask the mayor one thing?
Please go on.
Okay. Mayor, and thank you both for the reports. Thank you very much. With IU Health being a regional hub, can you talk with us about the hospitalization rate, and particularly from those that are internal versus, or compared to those that are outside of the city or coming from maybe contiguous counties?
Yes, you know, the fact that we have an IU Health facility means not only are we a regional hub, we're actually part of this whole they, and therefore, we are part of this whole statewide network, which is very helpful in a lot of ways. Patients are being sent at times from IU Health Bloomington up to Methodist Hospital up in Indianapolis for particularly severe cases. Cases are being sent from Paoli or Bedford up to Bloomington at times. So there's a, it's a fairly integrated system to serve people. The overall hospitalizations of the South Central region that we're in are as high as they've ever been for COVID. They're having to put procedures in place, again, to limit guests, to limit other operations and such, just to protect the, the, the beds that they have. But the, the data that we have on the state website, and therefore, that's then derivative in the county data, is, is actually based upon your, your residents, though. For, for example, our deaths are not the deaths in the hospital. They're the deaths of Monroe County residents, even if you died in Methodist Hospital, or if you died here. Either way, you're listed as a local death. So there, you know, they've been a terrific resource there. I understand there now, they are turning around tests within less than 24 hours, which is very helpful for their work in our community. It's, we're really lucky to have that sophisticated partner here. I don't know if that answers your questions, but, but we definitely have many people from the region who go to hospital here. We also have people from here who go to hospitals in other places, too.
Hey, thank you. That's a little bit more complicated than I thought on the surface, so thank, thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I, I wondered if it was PCR tests that are being conducted at this new facility? Is that right?
The, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think more and more people are aware of the fact that there's importance in the cycle threshold of PCRs. That is, you know, if you do a lot of cycles, you end up with false positives. So I, this is kind of a comment, but I think it would be a good idea to have that information on, on hand. In other words, communicate that with the, the clients who come in, if they ask. If they ask, you know, how many cycle thresholds is this? If they end up testing positive, that would be helpful. That's just a nerdy thing that, because I used to do it. I think it's important, you know. It's under a lot of criticism, PCR tests right now, and I think a lot of it is unnecessary. And, you know, the root of the matter is, well, you know, how, what's the sensitivity of the test? And this gives, gives people an idea, so that's a good thing. Oh, I have one other question, and that is, it's a rather small building. I assume that all precautions have been taken for ventilation and everything, because as people come in, and some of them are bound to be infected, you know, it'd be a good idea to, you know, unlike the Armory, which is a big, huge gymnasium-sized facility, you know, you're, you're unlikely to be breathing the same air, so.
Councilmember, I would encourage, I would encourage you to stop by. I actually stopped by. I didn't, wasn't getting a test, but I did stick my head in and just take a look at the place. It's bigger than you think. It's really quite large and quite spread out. I had absolutely no concerns at all with the distancing that I witnessed.
Great, okay.
I would just add one thing with regard to tests, and just to extend their public or media watching this, it's just always really important to remind folks that you almost have to behave in this world and in this time, regardless of what your test results are. You can get a negative test and be positive an hour later. You, you can have people who feel fine and would never get a test, because they have no reason to get a test, and half of the infections are coming from people like that, according to the CDC. So we really, the tests are important, and they could have been much more important many months ago, when we didn't have the testing regimes we should have. So they're obviously helpful to, to do the contact tracing. But for most of us, we really have to, we really have to behave as if the virus could be anywhere and among anybody, because it can't. it can't. And so we just have to continue to be careful until the vaccination really is spread throughout the community to extent that we can get herd immunity.
Okay, further questions? I see Councilmember Scambaluri.
Yes, thank you, just a few things. First of all, thank you so much to you and to our colleagues at the county and IU Health for doing the Friday press calls. I learn something new every single time, so thank you very much for being so consistent in that. I appreciate that. I'd like to follow up on Councilmember Sims' question and ask a little more specifically about local hospital capacity. My guess is that if we were at capacity or passed it, we would have heard by now, but are you hearing anything from IU Health or others about alarm numbers or anything like that?
I think the short answer is no. You know, the hospital capacity is reported on the state website, and our county capacity is reflected there. Both beds and the ventilator capacities are tracked. I think what you would hear from the healthcare system, and I can't speak for them, but I think what you would hear from the healthcare system is the greatest concern is really on staffing, to be able to provide needed staffing for all the cases. There are contingencies for locations as needed if we had to expand. I haven't heard a lot of concern about ventilator capacity in the last few months here, but it's healthcare worker capacity. It's one reason it will be so helpful to begin the vaccinations. It is important to note, I know you all know this, but the vaccination is a two-stage process. It takes three to four weeks between the shots, and another two weeks after that to begin to have immunization responses, roughly. I'm told I'm not a doctor, but, and in fact, there's not an insignificant number of people who, at the second shot, will get symptoms and may, so you can't vaccinate everybody all at once in a hospital, because your staff, you have to stagger the numbers that way, too. But it appears, I think that's the bigger concern, is just making sure we protect our staff, the healthcare staff.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. And thank you, too, for kind of underscoring the good news about vaccines on the way. Do we have any sense, once that starts, about the rate at which we can offer vaccines to our residents? How many people might be able to become vaccinated in a week? Do we know that yet, or is it too early?
It's early, and it depends on a lot of things. The state of Indiana, I'm told, has been given a number of total expected deliveries in that mid-December area time. It, of course, does depend upon the FDA approvals, which are not yet finalized, but assuming those do happen in the days ahead, it'll be hundreds of thousands of doses. Now, you have to cut that in half, because everybody needs two doses at the initial report. And then it really depends upon take-up rate, production rate, there may be more vaccines. This is Pfizer and Moderna that are in the first, it's actually Pfizer for the first round, I believe, and Moderna is right after it, and there may be more vaccines that come in the coming months, which would change the numbers a lot. So the best I think we see is the national predictions that by early summer, June-ish, if everything goes okay, we may well be all the way through the list, but that's, you know, a lot of this stuff is moving targets and depends on many things.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Carmichael. Appreciate it.
Further questions on the COVID response from members? Last call for questions. Just a reminder, Mary Catherine Carmichael, when does the facility actually start operating?
It is operating now. It started earlier this month, and so it is up and running. And the two sites, the Optum site and then the community site, have different hours, and you'll find those on the website among the other information. One facility has Saturday, or I think both facilities have some Saturday hours, but the days they take off are different, and so they try to keep it as available as possible during the course of the week.
What's that website again?
Oh, thank you for asking. It is, I should have it memorized by now, shouldn't I?
Come on, you're a fellow radio pro.
I know. Apparently not. Let's see, it's scheduling.coronavirus.in.gov. You've got it.
Is it just a website, or is there also a phone number that somebody could call?
No, it's website-based. I don't know that there is a phone number. I think they're really encouraging folks to...
Call the mayor's office if you have any trouble.
Or call the mayor's office. Very good. Thank you both, much obliged. We appreciate everything you presented to us tonight.
Thank you.
Any other reports from the mayor and city offices?
I don't think so.
Okay, so now we go to council committees. Any reports from council committees? See, now we go to reports from the public. If there is a member of the public who would like to address the council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your opportunity. Please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. Council Attorney Stephen Lucas will identify you and call on you to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Lucas?
Yes, thank you. I first see Jim Shelton, who should now be...
Mr. Shelton, you'll have five minutes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Jim Shelton with the Chamber of Commerce, but speaking at the moment on behalf of CASA, our Court of Portion Special Advocate Program. As I told you, we were having a fall class. It has finished. The grads are now being assigned classes. They will work into the backlog of 59 children who were waiting for a CASA, but we're still going to need more. We'll have a winter training coming up on, in February, February 9th through March 3rd. And I've been a CASA, I just celebrated my eighth year anniversary, and I just want to tell you, tell the public a little bit about how a case works. Two children were removed from their parents because there was domestic abuse in the home, and because the parents were heavily using drugs, were unable to take care of the children. They were two and a half and four-year-old at the time. And this was in 2016. I was asked to be a CASA on the case, and you do get asked, and you get to decline or accept a case, because the lady who had had it before was about to have her first child, and wouldn't have had time or energy to take care of. So I've been on the case for two and a half years. The case has been going on for four and a half years, and during those four and a half years, these children, who started out at two and a half and four, have in total, between the two of them, been in 25 different places, placements. Well, through the efforts of Judge Hill and Judge Harvey and several DCS people, and the other lady and myself, and a whole bunch of service providers, these children are going to be adopted into a permanent home in two weeks, two weeks from today. They're scheduled to be adopted. So that is obviously very satisfying to me. It makes all the heartache and sweat and worry that's in the last two and a half years worthwhile. This is the kind of impact that you can have on children's lives if you decide to become a CASA. So I encourage people to think about that. I know that sounds like it's way off in time, but applications will be due in about six weeks, and with Christmas intervening, that'll be here before you know it. So please think about it. It's very rewarding. It helps the community, it helps children. You can go to monroecountycasa.org and click on the volunteer link and learn a bunch of details that you might need to decide if this is something for you. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to share that with you and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Is there any other public comment on items not on tonight's agenda? Please raise your hand or type into the chat.
I did have a message come over chat from Sam Dove, who forwarded me a comment that says, "When will the virus end?", which I think is a sentiment we all, we all share.
If only, Mr. Dove, if only we knew.
And I have a request from, I'll give me a moment, MB, to comment, who should now be unmuted and ready to go.
Hello.
Five minutes, go ahead.
My name's Melissa Bowers. I just didn't have the name fully on there. I just wanted to make a quick comment concerning COVID and the restrictions that are currently in place here in Bloomington, and the effect of COVID on the schools in the area. I'm sure many of you kind of know what's going on with schools, and how hard all the teachers are working to make sure that students are able to be in schools, and following guidelines and things like that. But as you can imagine, it's been incredible stress on teachers this year. Many are struggling quite a bit. We've had, I mean, I know there's many that have retired or are close to retiring because of that. And I've also spoken at the MCCSC board meetings, talking about the struggles that teachers are having. So I just kind of, I wanted to make a statement to you all about restrictions, and if there are things that can be done to, you know, for the more nonessential things like bars and other businesses that, you know, aren't necessary to keep going, any more restrictions to help slow the spread so that we can keep schools open, because we know that that's what's most important for the students, our most vulnerable, our most important people in our community here. And it's, you know, teachers are scared, and families are scared, and they're worried about one another, and, you know, doing everything they can, but, you know, it's like, keep the economy and keep the businesses going versus keeping the schools going. And I feel like it's, you know, there's no easy answer to any of it. But, you know, I just, I feel like something's got to give, because it's just not sustainable like this. And I mean, I'm glad to hear that things are, you know, possibly a light at the end of the tunnel, and that's wonderful. But if there's any, you know, any other restrictions that can be put to slow the spread in terms of bars and other nonessential businesses, even for a couple of weeks, going into, you know, I don't know, stay-at-home, or some kind of something, I'm not sure what all can be done. I'm kind of pleading to, if we can do that, to, you know, keep the schools open, keep the kids there, keep our teachers and community members safe, you know? I would love for that to happen. I think that needs to be done, just to make sure that we're able to be there for the students, be there for our teachers, and keep our public education system going. That's all I have, so I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. So any other member of the public who would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Final call for public comment? Mr. Lucas? Is that tone coming from my end, or is that from somebody else that, the ringing? I can't tell. Okay. With that, we will now go to legislation for second reading. Madam Parliamentarian?
Did we have any appointments to boards or commissions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that. Are there any boards and commissions? I suspected not. We go now to legislation for second reading.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2007 be introduced and read by the clerk by title synopsis only.
You have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Smith is signaling yes.
Okay, so he still doesn't, okay. Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Scambaluri?
Yes.
The motion carries. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2007 to specially appropriate from the general fund, enhance access fund, solid waste fund, risk management fund, and the rental inspection program fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated. Appropriating various transfers of funds within the public safety, telecommunications fund, alternative transportation fund, parking meter fund, cumulative capital development fund, fleet maintenance fund, police pension fund, and appropriating additional funds from the general fund, rental inspection fund, solid waste fund, and risk management fund. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates various transfers of funds within the public safety, lit fund, non-inverting telecom fund, alternative transportation fund, parking meter fund, cumulative capital development fund, fleet maintenance fund, police pension fund. It also appropriates additional funds from the general fund, rental inspection program fund, solid waste fund, and risk management fund. Your committee of the whole recommendation was due past 800.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2007 be adopted.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. I believe here to present is Controller Jeffrey Underwood. Mr. Underwood, greetings and welcome.
Good evening, Jeffrey Underwood, City Controller, coming to you from a beautiful background that I wish was my office. This is our annual year-end appropriation ordinance, and I'd like to present for that. I know we have a couple of amendments. Do we need to get those read into the record before I present?
No, the presentation will be appropriate first, and then we'll go to amendments.
All right. I'm going to share my screen now, hopefully. And can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right. There we go. All right. Appropriation ordinance 2007, as I said, is our comprehensive 2020 year-end appropriation ordinance. The total of the appropriation is $1,630,400. That is $100,000 more than what I presented last time, and we'll have an amendment for that, and I will speak to that. This request covers 11 different funds, of which only four are needing additional funds, the other seven are only asking to move funds around. This can be broken down into four major components. The first is relates to COVID-19 expenditures totaling $549,000. $549,000. The second is a transfer of totaling $694,000. So we appropriate $397,000 out of the Office of the Controller to be moved to risk management. Therefore, the funds get appropriated twice you appropriated. Out of the general fund, put it into the risk management, and you have to appropriate it out of that. Third relates to the housing inspection funds, the annual appropriation and transfer in the general fund totaling $232,000. And the fourth is an appropriation from the general fund to be transferred to the Parks General Fund, and this was part of the recover-forward funds that were approved in earlier this year, and we did not appropriate the transfer over to the Parks Department, so this will take care of that to make them whole. The other issue that I spoke to last time was a technical issue. In 2020, we had 27 bi-weekly pays instead of 26. We had an issue with our software company in the way that it actually worked. Unfortunately, it didn't work. That was identified and corrected by the company. However, it was after the budget was passed, so it was too late for us to do anything about that. Adding a slide this time for, to show my spreadsheet, which I had last time, but didn't put it in, so this is for Counselor Isabel Piedmont Smith, to show her that I did have one, and she does have one as well. So as you can see, the general fund request is $871,400. That comes down to category one request of just under 380. Category two, supplies, just over $35,000. Category three, just over $385,000. And category four, just over $71,000. As you can see, it's a combination of increases, decreases, and no impacts. Public safety dispatch is a zero transfer, telecom non-inverting, zero transfer. Alltran is a zero transfer. Parking meter, a zero transfer. Sanitation, this was a $30,000 request, it's now $130,000, and I'll get into more details. Risk management, as I noted before, $397,000. And then fleet maintenance, cumulative capital development, police pension, R0s, and then rental inspection, $232,000. Total of $1,634,000. As I said, you showed, there's various departments that have asked for requests. The net fiscal impact on the general fund is $90,000. That's because we'll get $549,000 from COVID-19 funding, and I would, I'm happy to report that just before Thanksgiving, actually, I got it late Wednesday evening, all of our funds were received, about $2.7 million. So we will be expense transferring funds that have already been expended in like this, and then after the first of the year, we'll come to you. And then after the first of the year, we'll come to you with an additional appropriation for the remainder of those funds. So that was $549,000 there, $232,000 from the rental inspection fund for a total of $781 against the $871, so a $90,000 net impact. This ordinance has no fiscal impact on the city's property tax rates. Now, for the individual departments, Animal Care and Control, that's a $25,000 transfer from three to one, and that's to cover 27th pay issue that we've talked about, and temporary salaries and wages. Public Works Administration is requesting a $9,000 transfer in category one for 27th pay, and then releasing a net of $38,000 to be used for other departments. The Clerk's Office is requesting a $2,500 transfer, and this is the 27th pay, so a zero impact there. CFRD, they're requesting a $50,000 transfer from category one to category three, and a increase in category three of another $104,000. Those two items, again, $100,000 to be used for the city's portion of funding for the testing site, and additional $54,000 for the temporary women's shelter. And that shelter will run through March 31st. That question was asked last time. Council Office, $6,800 transfer from category three, and a $10,000 increase for a net request of $3,200, again, related to the 27th pay. Controller's Office, we're transferring $50,000 out of our category one, and asking for additional appropriation of $397,000 to go with that. And again, that's to go to the Risk Management Department to cover a couple of cases, long-term cases that were settled. Economic and Sustainability, they're requesting a release of $60,000 to go to other departments, $20,000 in category one, and $4,000 in classification three. The Fire Department requesting $175,000 transfer, and then additional department requesting additional appropriation of $60,000 in category one. And again, this is to cover 27th pay and additional overtime due to COVID-19 absences. The Legal Department is a net decrease of $11,000. They're doing $5,000 to cover the 27th pay, and then the remainder is being released for other departments. Office of the Mayor's requesting a $26,000 transfer, and an additional appropriation of $4,000 in category one, and $2,200 in supplies. So their net request is $6,200. And again, those, a lot of those were COVID-19 expenditures. The Police Department is requesting a $9,200 transfer from three to two. This will assist in covering COVID-19 costs, requesting a transfer of $9,000 from category four to category two, to cover repairs to damaged vehicles. Those do get reimbursed through insurance, and then we have to appropriate them. And then finally, an additional appropriation in category one of $275,000, and that's used to cover COVID-19 overtime, as well as cover costs related to the contract. If you remember, that contract was settled after the budgets were done. And so this is a catch-up for them. And then another $27,800 additional supplies in category two for COVID-19. HR is requesting a release of $185,000. The majority of that is from category one, which was the last phase of the salary study. So that's going to other departments. Information Technology is an overall increase of $310,000, $70,000 for one position that was created mid-year, and not funded, and then the 27th pay. And then finally, a total of $240,000 in categories three and four that are related to COVID-19 for additional services and equipment for people working remotely, so really bumping that up. And then finally, the Board of Public Safety, a big $200 transfer to cover their 27th pay. Public Works Facilities Maintenance, they're requesting a $10,000 transfer out of category two, an increase in category one of $23,000, an increase in category three of $30,000, and a decrease in category four of $20,000 for a net of $23,000. And the majority of that is for, all of it is for 27th pay. Finally, Planning and Transportation, they're doing a release of $31,000 total out of categories two and three, and the total of that is $871,400. Going on to the other funds now. Public Safety, Local Income Tax, this is central for Central Dispatch, they're requesting a transfer of a little over $11,000 from category two to category three, and this is needed for unanticipated repairs to the HVA system and related systems. No fiscal impact. Non-reverting Telecommunications Fund is requesting a transfer of $3,000 from category three to four, and this is related to equipment due to COVID-19. Alternative Transportation, the Police Department, they are asking for a transfer of $15,000 from category three, $4,500 to category one, and $10,500 to category two. The majority of that is 27th pay for the category one, and then category two's cover higher-than-expected credit card fees for payments, as we've tried to go to more online payment of those permits and fees. No fiscal impact since it's a net transfer. Parking Meter Fund, the Parking Services Division is requesting a transfer of $51,800 from category two to category three, and this is associated with transitioning the staff and equipment from the Police Department Parking Services Division. And again, there's no fiscal impact. Sanitation Fund, this is one that we have increased last week, or last time we spoke, we were asking for $30,000 additional appropriation. We've now bumped that up to $130,000. There will, there is no fiscal impact. The money is available and already appropriated in the general fund. It gets transferred over, as you remember. Sanitation gets funded from fees and property tax application from the general fund. What has happened to us in, since the time that we've talked, is the sanitation department has been hit very hard due to COVID-19. At one point, they had, due to positive tests and contact tracing, eight out of 18 people not available to work. So we're asking for an additional $25,000 in category one, and an additional $75,000 in category three to cover in category one for temporary help and overtime, and in category three, emergency contracts with a couple of private haulers to assist us. I did speak to Adam Wason tonight, Director of Public Works, and a shout out to him. It's his birthday, so I told him I'd give him the night off and try to answer any questions you might have on his behalf. So happy birthday, Adam. Hope that state was great that you got. But anyway, he was happy to report that he believes that we will only need to use the $25,000 in category one. We have not had to use the $75,000 that we're requesting in category three. However, as you just got the report is, who knows what the next, you know, three or four weeks, we're just now entering December. We could end up needing to have those funds. So if we don't need them, then the money won't be transferred from the general fund, so it reverts back. But we want to be able to have that in the case that it is needed. The Risk Management Fund, as I said, this is a transfer of 2,000 from category two to category one for the 27th pay, $7,000 from supplies to classification three, and an additional net, additional appropriation of 397. Again, this is to cover two long-term settlements that we were able to negotiate and settle at, I think, very good outcomes for the city versus a very long-term care process. Fleet Maintenance Fund, this is a zero request, $15,000 out of category four, $5,000 into category two, and $10,000 into category three for 27th pay and additional temporary employees to recover additional repairs and maintenance. Cumulative Capital Doma Fund is requesting a transfer of $100,000 from classification two, classification three, and this is to pump some more money into the neighborhood sidewalk repairs program that we began last year. So this will double that amount of money. And again, there's no fiscal impact to this request, and the same was true for the fleet maintenance request. And then finally, the Police Pension Fund, we're requesting $200 transfer from category three to category one, again, related to 27th pay. No fiscal impact due to that. And then finally, the Rental Inspection Fund, in 2012, the state legislature created new rules. We have to deposit all the revenue in this account, and then they allow us to transfer the money to the general fund, where the expenditures for the program are spent and appropriated. So we do this on an annual basis to transfer those funds. So we have to appropriately add to that, and it becomes a revenue stream for us. Thank you for your consideration of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. If you would unshare a screen, appreciate that. Are there initial first-round questions before we get into amendments on this ordinance? Second call for first-round questions. All right, let's do the amendments.
Mr. President, I move Amendment One to appropriation ordinance 2007.
Your motion and a second. We'll go ahead, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and present it.
This is correcting several typographical errors in the ordinance, including the whereas clauses, and then changing the word sustainability to sustainable in the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development, and changing the word alternate to alternative in the Alternative Transportation Fund.
Okay.
And then a few of the whereas clauses, like I mentioned.
Okay. Are there any questions on the amendment from members? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on Amendment One to App Ord 2007. If you'd like to comment on the amendment only, please use the raise hand function in chat, or type it, or in Zoom, or type into the chat. Are there any takers for public comment on Amendment One? Final call? Mr. Lucas, are there any takers?
Not that I see, no.
Thank you. Come back to the council for second round questions or debate on Amendment One, or any final comment on Amendment One. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I just wanted to point out that we did run this by Mr. Underwood, and he was okay with it.
I neglected to ask for staff's opinion of it, my apology. If Mr. Underwood is not in agreement with Councilmember Piedmont Smith, he should speak up. Okay. Further questions from members? Seeing none, we'll call a roll on Amendment One. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Bullen?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yep.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that amendment passes. We go now to the next one. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, on behalf of the administration, I move Amendment Two to appropriation ordinance 2007.
Second.
Motion, second. Mr. Underwood, would you like to present this amendment?
Yes, as I noted, this is the additional $100,000 request for the sanitation fund that is covered in the general fund, so there's no fiscal impact. It would be $25,000 to category one, so going from 30 to 55,000, and then an additional $75,000 in category three to be used, if needed, for private haulers to assist in picking up trash. And this is all related to COVID-19 absences.
Any questions from members on Amendment Two? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on Amendment Two to appropriation ordinance 2007. Final call for public comment? Seeing no public comment, we go back to the council for second questions or for debate. Any member with a comment on Amendment Two? Last call? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment Two?
Councilmember Bullen?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Sandberg? Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
I believe that's unanimous as well. That amendment is adopted. We now go to the appropriation ordinance as amended. Are there any other amendments? Okay, so questions on the ordinance as amended?
If I could jump, yeah, I just neglected to notice that this is also serving as the public hearing for this appropriation ordinance as required. The appropriation of ordinance as amended was duly advertised, so I just want to make that comment.
Thank you for that acknowledgement. I forgot about that. Okay, any other questions or debate? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, since there's some money being moved from the BPD to Public Works for parking enforcement, when is that changeover actually happening, or has it already occurred, that the parking enforcement staff is working, going to be working for the Public Works Department?
If the transition is happening this month, so we can get them all moved and all the vehicles redone, and it officially goes into effect January 1st with the new budget.
Okay, so they will officially be working for BPD until the end of December, and then the employees of Public Works?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Final call? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on the entire ordinance App Ord 2007 as amended. If anyone would like to make a comment on the appropriation ordinance, please use the raise hand function in chat, or in Zoom, or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas, is there anyone who would like to speak?
Not that I see.
Final call for public comment? Seeing none, we come back to the council for the questions or debate. Is anyone who has a comment on the ordinance as amended? Final call? With that, will the clerk please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 2007 as amended?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Bullen?
Believe that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ended wisely. And lovely library you have there. We'd like an invite sometime when COVID's over. Okay, with that, we go to legislation for first reading.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 20-28 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll of the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith? Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2028 to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning 7.22 acres of property from planned unit development to mixed-use student housing regarding 301 East Brownstone Drive, the standard at Bloomington LLC petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2028 would rezone 7.22 acres from planned unit development to mixed-use student housing.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 20-30 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll of the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Smith? Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
The motion carries. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2030 to establish the Citizens Redistricting Advisory Commission, to establish an independent redistricting commission. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance is authored by Councilmember Volin and amends Title 2 of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Administration and Personnel, to create a nine-member Citizens Redistricting Advisory Commission. This commission would have a two-year mandate to make recommendations to the common council on how to divide the city into six councilmanic districts following a federal decennial census.
Thank you.
President, I move that ordinance 20-32 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rala?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty? And Smith?
Signals yes, I think. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2032 in ordinance to amend ordinance 2022, which fixes the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2021. Synopsis of this follows. This ordinance sets the minimum and maximum salary rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2021 in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. That constitutes all of our first readings. Now we have to decide how they'll be heard. Mr. Lucas, I could use some help here. So I think we also need a five-minute special session next week to introduce a piece of legislation. Is that correct?
That's up to the council. We are quickly approaching the end of the year and there is at least one item that may be coming forward. And next week, if the council wanted to schedule a special session, it could provide an opportunity to introduce any final pieces of legislation before the end of the year and allow for those items to be discussed at committee meetings next week. The final meeting of the year will be a regular session on December 16th. So I know we're kind of leaking into scheduling, but we're closing.
Okay, for the sake of convenience, because the only function of the special session will be to introduce legislation, we would only need one person more than the first committee that would have to meet that night. And I'm happy to volunteer if I'm not on the committee, but looking at a special session at 5:30, land use at 5:35 to discuss ordinance 2028, public safety at 6:15, to discuss ordinance 20, the fire union contract. Is that correct?
Earlier, you had indicated you thought that public safety could go at 5:35 and the land use committee could.
Oh, I got it mixed up. I'm sorry. So public safety at 5:35, land use at 6:15, the admin committee at 7:30 to hear the ordinance 2030 and the clerk's city seal ordinance. And then community affairs at 8:30 to hear, I'm sorry, I'm getting them confused. There's a Title 2 ordinance coming forward. Is that right, Mr. Lucas?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so there's a Title 2 ordinance coming. That'll be in the packet on Friday. And I think that's being introduced in the special session.
Could you be a little?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you please be a little more specific as to the item of legislation that will be introduced at the special session? So that we know what you're talking about.
Does it have a number yet?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. It's an ordinance to amend Title 2 and includes various provisions of Title 2 that Councilmember Volin has been working to prepare.
Yes, this ordinance includes fiscal impact statements and, you know, other matters like that. Again, it's the only chance to introduce it now would be if we call a special session for five minutes and then have that meeting. But, yeah. So once again, sorry, I typed it wrong, Mr. Lucas. Would you give me the rundown?
I believe you indicated a special session at 5:30.
Right.
A public safety committee meeting at 5:35, which would be to discuss ordinance 2032, which was introduced tonight.
Yes.
And a company resolution that was released in the packet last week, but was not introduced tonight, but would be heard at the same public safety committee meeting. A land use committee meeting at 6:15 to consider the rezone that was just introduced tonight.
Ordinance 2028.
An administration committee meeting at 7:30 to consider both the city seal ordinance that was introduced a few weeks ago, I believe, and any other possible ordinance that's ready. I know Councilmember Volin has been working on a Title 2 ordinance that may also be ready to refer to that committee. And then a community affairs committee meeting at 8:30 to consider the
2030.
Redistricting Advisory Commission ordinance that was just introduced this evening as well.
Are there any objections or proposals for changes to those times? Open to suggestion. Again, the members of the public safety committee would basically be there at 5:30 and I would join long enough to introduce the legislation, assuming that no one objects to it being introduced and referred, and then we'll go straight into public safety at 5:35. Any questions, concerns, objections? Okay, with that, that will be the schedule for next Wednesday. And Mr. Lucas will publish it accordingly. Okay, with that, we go now to additional public comment. Do any member of the public who would like to speak on an item that was not on tonight's agenda? Please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the Zoom chat. Final call. Any takers, Mr. Lucas? Seeing none, we'll go to matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas?
I think we just handled most of the items of council scheduling, but a few other items. Just a reminder that the council sidewalk committee will be holding its first meeting tomorrow at 12 noon. That meeting will be held via Zoom. The link for that meeting can be found on the council website and materials related to that meeting can be found on the sidewalk committee's page on the council website. There was also an annual schedule released in the packet for today's meeting that includes meeting dates for 2021. This schedule in normal years is used to both schedule council meetings and to reserve meeting rooms throughout the year. Typically, other boards and commissions need to know when the council will be using what rooms so that they can schedule their own meetings. That isn't as pressing of an issue, but the council could still, if it was ready to do so tonight, approve the schedule with any changes it thinks are appropriate. And that would allow staff to post that schedule and coordinate with any other boards and commissions or groups in the city that need to make room reservations. I will note that the budget week that is listed on the draft schedule appears a week later than it did this year. This comes at the request of the controller who indicated that giving them additional time to incorporate revenue figures that they get from the state in early August would be helpful. So you'll see that move back a week. I will also note that there have not been any adjustments for any religious holidays. There was a religious holiday calendar included with the schedule in case any members wish to make any, propose any changes for accommodations. I'm happy to answer any questions about the schedule or to display it. If the council's ready to, it could approve it tonight. It could also discuss and make any necessary changes between now and December 16th.
We could also approve it at the special session if people, you know, saw fit to. Let me open the floor up to questions. Are any questions about the proposed council schedule? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, we had discussed informally that we might have a work session to talk about the budget process sometime in December. And I think it would be very helpful to have such a work session before we approve the schedule in case we want to schedule in any extra meetings or rearrange things in regard to the budget approval process. So I would not feel comfortable voting on this tonight and would request that we hold a work session prior to the December 16th meeting in order to discuss the budget process.
Mr. Lucas, do we have work sessions scheduled for either this or the next Friday?
There is actually a work session that appears on this year's annual schedule for December the 14th, which is a Monday. And that work session would be at 12 noon. I know it's a bit odd. I believe that's by virtue of the council's last meeting for the year following on December 16th. It's actually a work session that would cover topics ready for introduction in the first legislative cycle of January, but could also be used as an opportunity to discuss the budget process and any additional meetings or changes the council would like to see for next year.
I mean, is there, can we schedule a work session for, say, Friday the 11th just to talk about items coming on the 16th, if not this Friday? This Friday is too late. We wouldn't have 48 hours.
This Friday is too late. The December 11th would certainly work if the council wanted to schedule a work session for that date.
Yeah, I mean, I do think that Councilmember Piedmont Smith has a good point about, especially with the moving back of the budget week. And we haven't yet discussed other ways of thinking about doing the budget. I'm a little concerned about, and I've seen the schedule myself. I edited it. Yeah, I don't remember when exactly the actual budget legislation is introduced and whether we lose a week where amendments could reasonably be filed. So that's something worth exploring with members who would be interested in attending. So maybe I should ask for a show of hands, who would be interested in attending a work session to discuss the annual calendar?
When?
On Friday, the 11th. I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. We have a majority, so I take that as, yes, we should do a work session for the 11th. That would also give us a chance to preview anything for the 16th. Mr. Lucas, can we set that up?
And maybe you can clarify, would this be a work session in lieu of the December the 14th work session?
Yes.
Would this be an addition?
That's a good question, Mr. Sims. What do you think?
I was going to ask the same thing. I am committed on the 11th, so I won't make the work session. Obviously, it can still be scheduled. There's a majority. But my question was, how does that affect the December 14th?
Well.
Possible work session that I'm looking at.
It's a good question. Mr. Lucas pointed out that it was for legislation coming in the new year, whereas this is, I'm imagining, as for legislation and motions that we're still making in 2020. So I don't know what's going to be ready by the 14th.
Well, it makes sense, but the 14th is before the 16th and after the 11th. So I thought it was a legit question.
It is still a question.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Either way. Mr. Lucas, do you have any sense of, I mean, I know we bumped a couple of things to January already. Will there be legislation ready to discuss, to prepare for on the 14th, do you think?
I believe the administration has indicated that there are some items ready to come forward to council in the first cycle in January. I don't have a complete picture of what may be ready at the moment, but I know of at least an interlocal agreement with the animal shelter that is up for reapproval, that may come forward in January. And.
Okay, so with all due respect to Councilmember Sims, I think we may need to, because I know that several members have said that they wanted to have a discussion about budget process. And that could take a whole hour. So I don't know anything else to do except to leave the meeting of the 14th in place and also schedule a meeting for the 11th. Does anyone object to that or can I have a motion to that effect?
Well, I think you just need a motion to schedule an additional work session on Friday, December 11th at 12 o'clock.
That's what I'm looking for.
So I will make that motion. Do I need to repeat it?
No, I don't think so. Was there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll of the motion to schedule another work session for Friday, December 11th at noon?
Yes, Councilmember Rala?
Yes.
Scambalory? Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith? And Sandberg?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that motion carries. We will have a work session to discuss budget process on December 11th at noon. And the regularly scheduled work session of Monday, the 14th stays in place, which will be focusing solely on legislation for. stays in place, which will be focusing solely on legislation for the new year. Is there any other council matters, council schedule matters, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
All right, any other final announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, voice vote signified by saying aye.
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 Pose say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a pleasant evening and good night.